Okay, everybody, the hour of 7:32 is upon us. We're ready to begin our meeting tonight, tonight's business meeting. We have two members we're not waiting on, they're not going to be here, so roll call, please. Ruth Ann.
Member Exum.
Here.
Member Patton.
Here.
Member Kloski.
Here.
Member Fisher is here, and Vice President Hall.
Here. Okay, we have a quorum present, and I just wanted to mention that President Demmett is not here tonight. He gave me a statement to read out, to make sure that I do this correctly. He just wanted to let everybody know that he had another medical procedure this morning related to his stroke recovery, but the surgery went very, very well, and he'll be back with us as soon as he is able, so he's doing great. And I also wanted to thank two people who are running our camera tonight. We have student Aaron Lebansky, who is a student at UHS, and we also have our regular Austin Pontius, who is also in the camera, so thank you to both gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't believe we have any additions, corrections, or modifications to tonight's agenda at all, so we will move along to citizen statements. If anybody's here would like to make a citizen's statement, please fill out the golden rod sheets that are on the table in the doorway and give them to Lori. Doesn't look like anybody wants to make a statement, okay, so we will move along. We do not have a call for any executive sessions after tonight's meeting, so we are going to need an approval of the agenda, please.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carries. Okay, tonight, we are supposed to be having a recognition for our Habitat for Humanity Club at the high school. Do we have anybody here who's going to be?
Well, I think it's for a variety of people.
Okay.
So...
I didn't know if anybody was here.
Dr. Berenson, I don't know if you want to come up to the front?
Oh, Dr. Berenson's going to be the presence, thank you.
We weren't quite sure if our teachers were going to be here, but here is a picture of them from our social media. This was Cameron posted this September 11th, and I'll read what it says for those of us who have not seen it. Congratulations to Urbana High School teachers Laura Courts, Mark Foley, Terrence Smith, and Dave Dutton for being the recipients of the 2019 Voya Un Sung Heroes Award. Voya Financial awarded these educators from a group of 650 applicants and 100 winners with a $2,000 grant to honor their innovative teaching methods, creative educational projects, and their ability to positively influence the teachers they teach. And Dr. Berenson, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
You can just go ahead and grab the microphone and press the button to make it go green if you'd like to say a few comments.
So, anyway, I would just say we're really proud of this moment and opportunity, and I probably would just say, just talking with the teachers, they didn't even think anything of it because it's what they do. They were, obviously, it was a positive opportunity to be recognized, but they almost looked at me like, well, for what? Because it's part of what they do and part of what they try to organize and work towards all year, so it just says a lot about their character and what they try to do, and so it's a great moment for our school, and more importantly, I think they were thinking, what's their next project?
Right.
So, really good opportunity.
And just a little bit more about Voya, because we had to do a little research, we weren't quite sure. So, they were actually awarded the Working for Justice. As you know, Urbana High School has long been a promoter of social justice, so for over two decades, Voya has awarded nearly $5 million in grants to help over 2,000 educators bring their innovative teaching ideas to life. So, Dave Dutton shared with Lori, I don't know if you know this, Dr. Berenson, that this award qualifies them for a $25,000 award, too, possibly?
Yeah, they're in the running for that.
They're in the running for that, so we'll have to keep our fingers crossed and send them best wishes for that, yay.
Absolutely.
So, you want to show the little?
Yes.
Hold that up so Austin can see the, there's their plaque with all their names and their little fake $2,000 check.
Yes. They won't be able to cash this one.
We can't cash it, but we'll get it. So, in their absence, we'll kind of give them a big shout-out.
And we'll be putting this up in the main office as a recognition, so as we have guests that come through, they'll be able to see their accomplishment.
And they chose the perfect spot to stand in the high school, be the change you wish to see in the world, so that's down.
We asked them where to go, and they picked that spot.
That's where they wanted to stand. Awesome, yay. Thank you, Dr. Berenson.
Thank you. Moving on, we do actually have some policy review tonight, 8.0 on the agenda. We have the Press Plus Issue 101, which is updates to our current board policies, so I'm going to let Jimson manage all of that.
Yes. So, I do want to get a little input from the board, and I hope, so Lori, you can take us back to our main screen. So, you do not have, so just for our viewing audience, like if I hold up all the stacks of papers, a lot of paper involved in this actual press adoption, so we did not make copies, of course, we did not make this many copies available for the public as well, but we have the policies if people want to see them, as we discuss them. And so, board members, the way administrative team did this is we took all the policies and kind of grouped them for you, so I guess moving forward, as we have these big policy reviews, I just want to make sure that the way that we did this met the way you'd like us to do it moving forward. So, when we sent them to you to look through, we gave you three kind of packets, I guess. So, one packet was, so this packet where all okay, no changes. So, you guys have been doing this for a while, so instead of us walking through like 100 of these, we walked through them as a team, and of course, our attorneys looked through them, too, and all of the suggestions from press, if they were things that we were amenable to, we thought fit what we currently do, we said that we would adopt those and we thought they were okay with no changes. So, that was one packet. But again, if you have questions about any of these, we can talk about those tonight. So, you received the all okay, no changes, we're happy with the language that press gave us, and then you received another packet, so this particular press had a lot of five-year reviews. So, you have a separate packet where basically, press is asking us, hey, you've already adopted this policy, Urbana, review it, it's been five years since you adopted it, make sure you're still okay with it, and go through all the language. If you want to change something, this is the time to do it. So, we looked through those, our attorneys looked through those, and we were fine with most of them, I think there might be one that we're going to talk about. So, then you have a five-year review packet. So, what Lori did is she took the five-year review, she compared it to the current policy that we already have, and we said yes, we were happy with these, so that was a separate packet. And then, the packet for mostly discussion tonight, there were things that, as a group, we felt were pertinent and should be discussed in open session, and so we have some that we pulled out, and you got those as a separate packet, so you could not, I'm sure you read all three packets, but the one that we were going to review tonight in open session was the one that we kind of encouraged you to spend more time going through, so we can discuss them in open session. Is that the way you'd like us to do that moving forward? Did that work for you guys? Yes, okay.
Yeah, no, I did, too. My only question is just the sheer volume, I mean...
Yes, there was a lot.
And maybe it's because of the time of year, but, you know, we review these every, I don't know, twice a year, every season, and a smaller number, especially things that had real substance, I don't, the ones that are just changed to reflect legal changes or changes in the code, but things that really had real substance.
There were a lot.
Yeah, and I, is there a time?
So, there is a time...
Timing thing, is that why you felt like we all had to do it?
Well, there is a time limit, so I think, one, we got this at the end of our interim team's time with us, and so there were a couple that we just kind of put on hold, and then we went for the summer, we left for July, and then we all came back, and we have to have these turned in in October. So, that's why we're kind of doing them in a big group.
More quickly than you would otherwise prefer to do.
Yep, and that's why we don't have anything else on the agenda except this.
Gotcha.
We don't have any reports or study session topics, so we could just focus on this. And again, this gives us, you know, we're not approving them tonight, it gives us an opportunity as a team to go back, and if there are things that you guys want us to investigate more, or talk to administrators about a little bit more, or there are a couple that are related to health, if you need us to talk to the nurses, it gives us at least another meeting for us to go back and do that investigative work, and then come back one more time before we have to approve them and get them off at the end of the month to press, well, at the end of October.
At the end of October.
Sound good?
Sounds good.
So, I think from now on, we'll just kind of do, we'll do the heavy lifting ahead of time as a team, my team will, and then we'll, and again, anything that you see in any of them is open for discussion. We just felt like there were certain things, of course, we don't want to make decisions for you, and then things procedurally that we felt like we needed to talk about here for the viewing public, too.
Gotcha.
Okay, all right, so I'm just going to jump right into the packet for open discussion. Were you, is that for me? Nope. I thought you were clearing your throat to tell me something, sorry. Okay, so we're going to just jump right in. So, the first one that we wanted to talk about with you to get your input on is 2-140, and that is communications to and from the board. So, this basically is not a lot of changes, but this gives the board the opportunity to have opened this, Ann and I were just talking about, a board, all-board email that she received. Right now, what we do is when we comply with this, because we list the FOIA requests at the end of our board agendas, this policy is giving us opportunity, if you receive like a board communication, so we had a student, can I share your example?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, we had a student who emailed the board, Matilda Fernandez, and made a request to the board, so that, since it was sent to the board as a board communication, that would be something this policy would give us opportunity to bring and have a discussion about here, or to list it as we list FOIAs at the end of our agendas, to say, this was an all-board communication, and this is how we responded, or didn't respond, or how we handled it. So, that's probably a really recent example, and that is basically what 2-14 gives us the opportunity to do. So, is that something, you guys have opinions around that, or? I just use Matilda's as an example because we just got it like last week or week before last, but...
No.
Yes?
For me?
Yes. Okay, so Lori, you're taking notes for me, right?
Would this go under the communications section of the agenda, then, or will we put it at the end?
Yes, it would go where, kind of at the end, I think we would list it as we list the FOIAs.
Okay, because, yeah, there's that section, section nine for communications.
We can put it there, too.
That I never, I mean, in the years I've been here, I don't know that we've ever had anything listed in there, so it makes sense to put it at the end, too, that's fine, for me, anyway.
Yeah, we can put it wherever you guys want.
I don't care.
I'm looking at the notes to see if there's a specific place there where it says we have to put it, but I think we could put it in either place.
Oh, okay.
Do you mind if I write on this?
Yes.
Can I write on this? Okay, I mean, can I take it?
So, yes, I'm seeing a lot of, yes, okay, so we'll move on, that one is a yes.
I mean, I will...
So, 2-230, this policy is public participation at Board of Education meetings, so this policy, right now, we currently set our public participation for a five-minute limit. I know there are times, we don't run a clock, or we don't have a visual like a lot of districts do, but we, John will give really nice reminders, you've done that, too, to kind of remind people to stay within our five-minute limit. This policy would allow the board to set a public participation time limit for the segment, so we would say we would have a 30-minute, is what they give as the guideline, expansion of the overall minimum of 30 minutes for public participation, and/or we would have the opportunity for a 20-minute total length for any one subject, is the additional language. So, again, we can continue to do what we already do, or we could, I thought it might be worth having some public discussion around your thoughts around these suggestions.
Yeah, I had to read this a couple times, because as I'm reading it, it's establishing a minimum participation time, and I don't know why we need, I mean, I understand the notion around a maximum, saying we won't spend any more time than this, but why would we need a minimum amount of time? I mean, we, so, I mean...
So, this is giving us to say, okay, we would have a minimum 20 minutes to talk about discipline, or 20 minutes to talk about a new administrator hiring process, or, and we would limit by subject, or we can limit our whole time, overall minimum of 30 minutes, or we can keep doing what we already do, and just do our five-minute.
But limiting it would mean a maximum, but a minimum just says, we, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
I feel like it's the opposite of what I think the goal, what they're intending for us to do.
With the goal of what they're trying to do.
Right, to say, we'll have a minimum of 20 minutes, well, it could be a minimum of 20 minutes, but we'll spend two hours on it, a maximum, I mean, anyways, I, so I don't understand the purpose of this policy, actually, because I don't see a minimum as being useful at all. I am in favor of the policy we have...
Currently.
Right now, which is a five-minute, and we have actually used a time piece a couple times when we've had, you know, a full house, and I think that's been valuable, but I certainly favor allowing, spending as much time on a topic as we need to, even if it's two hours, and letting everybody speak who's here to speak.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Other people, agree with that? That's what we thought, too.
Absolutely.
We definitely need to hear people's opinions about the five-minute limit.
Because the only time it ever is lengthy is when it's an issue that people really want to talk about. I mean, tonight, perfect example, we don't really need a time limit for anything, but I don't want anybody to feel like they're being, you know, squashed, or silenced, or whatever.
I think we agree as a team, but we wanted to hear your thoughts. Okay, so we will say no and not adopt 2-230, and we will continue with our current procedures. Next is 4-130, oh, 4-15, the identity protection, we don't really need to discuss that, but that is, I made myself a note about that one, because this is one that we would, HR would have to notify every staff member, so the change is that we are now going, so if you look at number four, about social security numbers, when collecting a social security number or upon request by an individual, we have to give the stated reason for collection of the social security number, and it must be relevant to the documented purpose of why we're asking. So, this will be something that we'll have to add to our HR documents, because it doesn't currently exist. So, this is more of just a policy change, something we're going to have to do, not really anything we need to discuss, so that's more of an informational one, 4-15. 4-130, this is the free and reduced lunch, free and reduced price food services, so we just wanted to mention this one out loud. I don't know, Carol, if you want to add anything, but right now, as a CEP, Community Eligibility, Community Eligible District, this would really not impact us and only be applicable if we were no longer CEP, so we would change this policy, should just add a note about that and reflect that. Isn't that what, is that what Jean?
It's only applicable if we're no longer a CEP district.
Because right now, because we're CEP...
No kids pay for anything.
Everybody eats for free, so if we ever have to go back to paying, and I don't even know what we, what it is anymore, it used to be $1.80, $2.10, or something like that, I don't know. If we went back to that, then we would have to pull this policy back out and look at it again, but right now, we're going to adopt it, because these do live for like five years, and we will have, we will add the note that it's only applicable if we're not eligible for CEP any longer. Okay? All right. 4-20, this is our fund balance policy, and if you see the language, the school district seeks to maintain a year-end fund balance to revenue ratio of no less than 15% to 20%. Our practice has been higher than that, it was actually in our strategic plan to have it be higher than 15% to 20%, that's always a goal, but I don't know if you want to add any more to that one, too.
It was actually 25% in our strategic plan, so we're not anywhere near that, so we...
It's a goal.
It is a goal, obviously, so I recommend that we probably, we decided we had to go ahead and keep this, because we're not even doing the 15% to 20% right now, but again, it's a good goal to have.
And the language gives us that leeway, because it says we seek to maintain that, we always seek to maintain that, it's always a goal, we don't always reach it, but it's always our goal to get there. So, we'll, we just wanted to say that out loud. Okay. 4-170 is the, you're all aware of this, the new changes related to intruder drills, that we are required now, we've been required to have one law enforcement drill that addresses a school shooting incident, here we call it an intruder drill, we don't call it a school shooting drill, but now, this new language requires us to do that within the first 90 days of school. We have our first crisis team meeting this week, so we'll be planning for those drills to happen in the next two weeks, hopefully by, at the very latest, the first week of October, so we'll be in compliance with this language. Again, I think this was added because a lot of districts were waiting to the end of the year to do their drills, as kind of a checkbox, you know, like, you know, we've not been doing that here, but I know that is why this language was added to the School Safety Drill Act, to require districts to do them earlier, which makes more sense. It makes more sense to do these as soon as you can get them in, so students are prepared for the school year. So, that is something we're already doing, we'll add that new language, but I just wanted to note that out loud, that one, we're in compliance with that, and that the change to the 90 days.
Can I just ask you a question about that policy?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not something that's up for change, but it just raised a question in my head, you know, in that policy, they talk about, you know, 90, having this drill 90 days after the start of the year, and requiring participation of all school personnel and students present, except for those exempted by administration or school support personnel. Who would that be? Who?
So, I think, well, and I didn't say this, too, another reason that this was added is because there are still some districts that have not been drilling with students, and, you know, we've been doing that for a very long time. I would say someone who an administrator might say would be exempt is if you have a teacher who maybe had a family member that was killed in an act of gun violence, you know, you have those emotions and feelings. I actually, in Champaign, had a teacher who we did not have her participate, because it brought back too many memories, and it was kind of a traumatic event for her, and so as long as she knew the routine, she knew what the expectations were, in a real situation, the drill was something that she didn't need that extra anxiety just to do the drill, so we would have someone else go in in her classroom.
But would certain students be exempted? I mean, I can think of a large population of students for whom this might be...
I know, we still try, and, you know, Todd can weigh in, but I know even our students that might be confined to wheelchairs and things like that, we want as many of our students as possible to participate. I know part of drilling, you drill what you do, so I think our staff need to know if they have to pick somebody up and carry them out, in a real situation, what would they do? Same thing you do in a fire drill, I mean, they have to have, we have to have those precautions of how we evacuate the building. So, Todd, I don't know, do we exempt any of all of our students participate?
I think generally, that's the case, I mean, there might be extreme circumstances, other things are going on that we might, you know, might not do that, but...
Sure.
And we can research that a bit more, too.
Yeah, and find out.
There is a reference to one of the public laws in here, we can double-check that, too.
The only other time that I can think of is, I know fire drills can be very alarming for students with autism sometimes, just the noises, and the lights, and the flashing, and the excitement of it all, so that might be another exemption.
Which just raises, and this is the last question, because I know this isn't the focus of our discussion today, but I assume, and I should know the answer to this, but I just want to, have you say it out loud, that the way we conduct intruder drills is very age-appropriate, how we do it in kindergarten, it's not how we do it in middle school or high school, and it takes into account.
Yes, and I just actually met with one of the lieutenants who's in charge of that at UPD, and the chief, and we were starting to review our procedures and how we've been doing them, it was good for me to have that conversation, so I have a baseline of what we've been doing the last two years, since I haven't been here, so we can pick up where we left off and just keep going and moving forward, and I think we have some things that we need, we can work on per UPD, but yeah, I believe everything that we're doing is age-appropriate, and we do have a lot of new staff who we need to bring up to date at all of our schools, we've had, you know, a lot of new hires in the last two years, so I think it's important that they know the expectations of what to do in the event of an intruder event.
Thank you.
Other questions? This is a really important one. Okay. So, that was 4-170, so our next one that we want to discuss is 4-190, this is new legislation, this is the, I know you've all been getting those legislation updates, we've been sharing them with you around the threat assessment language, so targeted school violence prevention program, this is very new. So, we've been having a lot of discussions at our team level, and Todd is, has, we already have a threat assessment protocols in place, kind of individually for students, but in terms of having a threat assessment team, that's something that we have informally had in place, I would say, but not as formal as this policy requires it to be. So, we're going to be having those conversations, our first Staff Development Day is September 27th, so Linda Gibbons works with our social workers, Todd, that's an opportunity for him to pull his folks together, and we're going to start that beginning conversation around what a threat assessment district team, what it is, what it means, what they do, and we have until December to weigh in and let ISBE know what we're doing. We're also waiting, since this is so new, for a little guidance from them, because they haven't really given us any yet, they've just kind of adopted the language. So, we are on top of this one, so we're going to adopt this one and work toward getting something in place by the deadline in December. Todd, do you want to add anything? You don't have to, but...
Yeah, I guess I would add, you know, this came out in the last press, and I think even since then, there's a new law that passed on October 26th, that Public Act 101-0455, which talks about threat assessment teams and threat assessment protocols, so it defines even more than what's in policy right now. My guess is press at some point will catch up with that, so it's something we need to do anyways, because laws have changed.
Yep. I think we have a good beginning, I've seen, you know, we have some staff members that are trained to do those, but in terms of having a comprehensive district team, that's something that we're going to work toward. Other questions about that?
Okay. Once that's actually decided upon, is it going to be something that we send out to parents, I mean, will we make some sort of statement to the families of what our protocols are, you know, in the case that somebody hears something or sees something, and, you know, sort of like, which person in the district do we report to, and how is it going to be handled?
Yeah, part of that is reporting protocols and who to talk to if you have concerns, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And so, we'd add it to our district handbook, that would be one that would go in the handbook that everyone gets when they register, and then, of course, we'd have Kim bring that to a principal's meeting, so our principals know these are the steps, and they can, I mean, they all have PTA meetings, that would be a great place, I think, to have that discussion and say, here's something new.
Good information for the website, as well, yes.
Yeah, website, too. Okay, 5-100, Staff Development Program, we were fine with this one, the only thing I just wanted to note is that we're kind of going above and beyond our CBA, this one is talking about allowing, let me get to that spot, it's a lot of language, the board So, we actually allow Masters plus 60 board credit, and this is talking about using the bachelor's language. Oh, and this is also talking about the suicide prevention, which we have suicide protocols as well in place already. So, that one was a really easy one. 5-220 is one that we've decided not to adopt, but we definitely want your input, I guess I recommend that we not decide it, you guys are going to decide.
Yeah.
We are going to recommend. So, 5-220, the substitute teachers, as you know, we have not only a teacher shortage, but we also have a sub shortage, and so this language really ties our hands in a lot of ways, it really is talking about short-term substitute licenses, it's requiring subs to pay for additional physical fitness tests and a physical exam, other, just other things that we feel like we don't want to have to tie our hands around, limiting what our subs can do, and so this is one that we thought we would say no to, unless the board thought this was something we should look into further and actually adopt. So, Peggy, you look like you want to ask a question.
What you said makes sense to me, although I thought the point of this policy was that it was... was that it would enable districts to hire short-term subs. I mean, hire people that they otherwise wouldn't be able to get into the pool.
So right now, we already do this through our building-based, what do we call them, Andy? Building-based teacher subs. So we already have these in place throughout the district. I can't remember how many. We have several at the middle school, several at the high school. Does every elementary have one? Yes?
Yes, they each have one. And some of the things, we offer really competitive benefits for subs.
Turn your. We actually have competitive offerings for our building-based and district-based subs to keep them here in Urbana, so much so that our friends across Wright Street have stepped up their game to meet what we're doing. And so I'm revisiting this policy from when we looked at it over, you know, we've been looking at it for a while now. And so some of the things here, they said, you know, substitute teachers receive only monetary compensation for time work and no other benefits. We offer additional things to keep subs happy here, because we appreciate the work that they do, and we want them to choose Urbana over some of our competing districts. And so this was something that we did think that tied our hands a little bit, and that's why we were recommending not to adopt, because it was saying that they had to have this short-term licensure. And it was, it just seemed like it wasn't necessary. We had a little bit longer of a discussion.
Well, for them to say they can teach no more than five days, five consecutive days, really limits our, ties our hands.
Sorry, my screen just shifted from what I was going to say.
Because right now, we already have long-term subs that we can, you know, we hire them as long-term subs, so we can put them in places much more than five days.
Right, and where they're compensated for planning and grading and intending nighttime activities. And then, you know, we have people that are going to the same buildings every day, which is really nice, so that they're not going to different assignments every day, and they build a rapport with the staff. So we just didn't feel like this, we felt like this was going to tie our hands a little bit more.
Well, that's good to hear. I know it also talked about training for some school substitutes.
Yes.
You know, on building operations and curriculum.
We do have a training program for our substitute teachers, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
It's not as in-depth as I'd like it to be. I am familiar with the program, and I would like it to be a little bit more. And so that's something we're evaluating this year.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Other questions about that one? Okay. Five three oh. Not anything really new here, just kind of adding this one. Is this, oh, this is the superintendent one. So this is the one that has some language around superintendent hiring. So the board maintaining a superintendent job description. It gives the board the opportunity, when you have a successful superintendent, and you guys did do this, doing the, not just fingerprinting, but it allows boards to, when you have a candidate that you're interested in, to authorize additional background checks. Going to be above and beyond just the basic fingerprint background checks, so the more in-depth background check. I think that's what this one. Oh, and it also provides some language around, and basically we just did this too, the superintendent being able to hire short-term and special project work. So you can bring in, well, I guess we didn't just do this, but the board reserves the right to bring in people for special projects in short-term. Find that. This print is so small.
Yeah, I know.
I'm on number five three oh, Hiring Process and Criteria. Oh, that's not in the packet? Oh, well, we'll have to send that one around to you guys. I'm sorry. I don't know how we missed that one.
It's in the other packet. It's in the review and compare packet, I think.
Oh, it's in the review, and I pulled it out, yes. It's in the review and compare, because we made a change to it. So I'll give you time to find it and look at it if you want. It's page, it's thirty of ninety-four. Okay. So I'll let you look at it. It talks about districts looking at personal online accounts, social networking websites, requesting from potential employees their passwords to get into those accounts. So that's one if we're interested in. And then, do you guys have five three five? Was that part of your packet? Okay, good. I was like, maybe I pulled out another one. So five three five is basically complying with the Fair Labor Standards Act. And this is one that we would have to, you know, it's a five-year review one, but Carol and I have had a lot of discussion. This is the exempt one, Carol, where we'd have to add. Right now, we've not, we need to go back, and this is something we've talked with Angie about, too, is going back to all of our job descriptions and making sure that when someone is exempt from comp time and overtime, that we are listing that really clearly on job descriptions. There have been some employees who have come back to us and said, you know, they, we want them to be exempt from that. And there's some very specific language around whether you can be exempt and why. So some people are exempt if they have it, if they supervise other staff or if they have confidential matters that they're, as part of their job. But not everyone wants to be, if we hire them and we don't tell them upfront, you're exempt from overtime and comp time. And we didn't clearly put that on the job description, and it wasn't clearly posted when they applied in interview. We can't go back now and say, sorry, we think your duties and what you're doing make you exempt from this. We can't go back and change that. So we need to go back, and this is something HR will have to do. And it kind of came up as we were doing this five-year review. That's why these are kind of nice. So it was something that, as a five-year review, Carol, remember there have been a few instances where this has happened in the last couple of years? We've already had one happen since I've been here. An employee that we wanted to move to exempt, and we had to give them a choice, because they were hired as an employee who, they, you know, they'd been hired and thought they would be receiving overtime and comp time. And then now, we were kind of changing it midstream and saying, well, we think your duties are a little more exempt, and, you know, this is what we expect. And when the employee said, no, that's not what I was hired to do, we had to honor that, because it wasn't, it wasn't what we hired them to do. So that's something, as we post positions, we'll have to be very clear about who's exempt and who is not moving forward. So this is something that we'll have, is kind of work for us. But it was good for us to review this, because it brought several of those special circumstances to light for us. So that's five three five. Almost done. Do you guys have five three three oh? Okay, sick days, vacation, holiday. This is just one that we just, you know, we wanted to just put out there, because I know these are always discussions that happen when we bargain, and this is, this will be a bargaining gear for us later. So there's language that we need to add in that after, it talks about forty-week, fifty-two-week employees as a condition for paying sick leave. And so we're changing that wording to say, as a condition for paying sick leave of three days' absence or more for personal illness or of thirty days or more for birth. And this, that would align to what we have in our CBA, because right now, this does not align to our current CBA language. So we're going to have that aligned to what we currently do. So I just wanted to say that out loud. That's the only change, is that one little line in that paragraph. And I'll say it again. As a condition for paying sick leave of three days' absence or more for personal illness or thirty days or more for birth, or as the board of, or superintendent deem necessary in other cases. And then it goes on from there. So we're going to, we're going to make that change in press, so it aligns with our CBA. And next is six forty, and the only change, I just wanted to, I know there was a lot of discussion in the last year about the acceleration policy. So this basically adds the, our acceleration placement policy to our curriculum development policy. And then I'm going to jump a little bit. I'm going to save seven one ninety and seven two seventy for the end. And I'm going to jump to seven three oh five, the student-athlete concussion and head injury. So this has been something, as you guys know, in recent years, concussions, IHSA, IESA, that return-to-play policy has been huge for student-athletes. The addition to this is something that we've not been doing, that we will have to do once we adopt this policy, is we will need to distribute to all of our staff members and parents a Illinois Department of Public Health concussion brochure that we do not have, that we will be getting. And making those available now as part of our registration process. Already, our athletes, when they go through the eight to eighteen, you know, when they sign up to participate as a student, I think at the middle level, too. But I know for the high school level, for the eight to eighteen, they have, there's all kinds of concussion protocols that the parents have to sign on, the students have to sign off on. But this is new, so this is where we would, we would add this to Station Ford Registration, where we have our physicals and immunizations, and parents come through. We'll make those concussion protocol brochures available. And those are, those are available from the Department of Public Health. So that's the only change there. And then the last two, I think, are going to require a little more discussion. So seven one ninety, and Ashley's, these are the couple that we started discussing in June, and we put to the side when Dr. Williams was still here. So seven one ninety is the medical cannabis policy. And then if we say yes or no to seven one ninety, then that implicates what we do for seven two seventy, which is administering medicines to students. That one has the medical cannabis piece, as well as the undesignated asthma inhalers. So I know we had the discussion about that. So let's do seven one ninety first. And that is the controlled cannabis. It authorizes that we can administer medical cannabis as part of Ashley's law. So we had a lot of discussion about this at our team level. And at this point, I think we, and I believe, if we say no to seven one ninety, we can say yes to the part of seven two seventy that aligns with the asthma medication, because we want to do that part. We're just really concerned about what it would mean if we opened the door to students, yeah, just having possession or, you know, being able to administer the medical cannabis there on campus. So I don't know what you guys, your thoughts about it are, but.
Does that prevent a student who is prescribed medical cannabis from?
So I think what we talked about is, at individual cases, right? I would think these would be individual conversations, that we can talk to our administrators about this. We wouldn't want to, you know, say that student couldn't have access, but maybe, we were thinking, maybe the parent could set up a plan. And we've got a couple administrators in the room. I don't know what their thoughts are. But maybe the parent could come at a designated time and take the student out to the car or if the student lived, you know, if it's a high school kid, they could sign themselves out, go home and come back. We just thought we're opening ourselves up to all kinds of things if we're just allowing this to happen, right, on school property. But I don't know that we would be saying no. I think it would just be coming up with a plan. And we don't need a policy to tell us to do that. That's just something we would do individually with students. I don't know. You guys are sitting in the room, administrators, where you think, I'm putting them on the spot. They're like, I don't know.
I presume there's other medications for which
Oh, sure.
parents do this type of thing already. So it kind of makes sense when this is so new, just to kind of.
Yeah, I'd love to see how other districts are going to do this first, before I kind of put ourselves out there and say, we're going to do it. I'd like to see how other people handle it, and then we can kind of learn from their mistakes or learn from the things that they do well. But I think right now, we would, we would work with the family. If they came to us and said, this is something that they needed to do, we would just individually
Make it happen.
Make it happen and come up with a plan for it.
Because I would.
You know, as I read through some of the press information, one other concern out there is some of the interplay between state and federal, what's considered an illegal drug and jeopardization of federal funding. That's a very gray area right now, too, so something else to consider.
Well, yeah, I'm comfortable with your recommendation, as long as, as you say, that there's accommodations made for
Oh, absolutely.
students who need this in order, you know, for their condition, so.
And I don't know how we, I mean, I don't know. I don't want to limit how we would write those plans. I think we would just work with the family like we would for any, you know, if this were just a regular behavior plan or a, you know. Right now, we have students who get medications for seizures or, you know, all kinds of things that they, you know, we work around when they need to take those and who needs to give them to them, and whether it's a nurse, whether it's a family member.
Thank you.
Other comments? So then, if we say no to this part, and I think Lori, you tell me if I'm right or wrong, if we say no to it now, we can always come back to it later and review it, so. So if we see some districts have come up with some really creative things or, you know, we can kind of keep monitoring it, then we can always come back to it and adopt it again. So I'll just say that. And then for seven two seventy, we have been kind of doing a little research around the, I know this was a big discussion here with the group, with Dr. Williams, around how we would follow the spirit of the language here around that undesignated asthma medication. So, right, we've gone back and forth as a team. We've kind of talked about, would this be something we would put in the AED machines that we have all over the building? I went to a superintendent seminar at the ROE this week, and they gave me our Stop the Bleed kits that we're going to give to our administrators tomorrow at principal's meeting. So, you know, we get one kit per building, just like we have one AED machine per building. So we would, we're going to come up with a designated place where we put the Stop the Bleed kits. We talked about putting them in the AED machine, but Todd's been talking a little bit more with our head nurse, our district nurse, and she's been talking to nurses. And we've decided that this would be something we'd put in the office, because there is language in here that says it, not just anybody can give the student an inhaler if they come in and they have, they're, you know. This, and again, remember, the spirit of this law is that these are, these are students who have not been diagnosed or they're not prescribed asthma meds. They maybe don't even know they have asthma. And you have a student, for instance, who, you know, it's been really hot, it's ninety degrees. They come inside, they've been playing at the end of the day. It's, you know, outside recess, or our high school kids that go out, or the middle school kids that are outside, and they come in and their breathing is really labored. So someone in the office would need to be trained to see what are the signs. Is this asthma? Is this just, you know, something else happening? So we want to err on the side of caution and not have it just be freely available in the AED machine, where anybody can take it out and give it to the child or the student. We want it to be someone that we would train on what they need to look for, you know, what are the signs around what a non-diagnosed asthma reaction might be.
Yeah, and the, in some of the policy notes, it talks about it has to be a nurse or somebody trained, as you said, Jennifer, and ISB will be coming up with some training materials for that and what that looks like.
Almost like, remember years ago, when we, part of this language is also the EpiPen, that we started having on, just available extra EpiPens in the office. And then we trained all the staff, is this is how you, we were doing those, like everybody was kind of stabbing themselves with the EpiPens, like this is how you, you know, administer an EpiPen if you need to. And that was, you know, that was our training, and that was counted as a training, and we had everyone practice it. So we'd have to come up with something similar, you know, around how that trained professional, was that a, you know, an office secretary? Is it, when the student comes in the office, who's the first? who's the first person they're likely to see, in the event they are having a, an asthma attack, and they don't even know they have asthma? Um, we've also had a conversation about the prescriptions, because again, not, you know, we're not just gonna be able to go get a, um, a inhaler, you can't just go buy 'em, you know, it's not something you can get off the shelf, so we would have to get scripts for them.
Primatene mist is back.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. Uh, primatene mist is back and available.
Oh.
Uh, they do keep it in the pharmacy area.
Okay.
But you can buy one for about thirty dollars, at either, uh, haven't been to CVS, I know they have them at Walgreens.
Oh, we didn't know that.
So it's right at thirty dollars, uh, to buy that for yourself, if you have to have a backup, or something like that, if you're traveling, or whatever.
Without a prescription.
Or if you have a prescription. I'm talking from experience, I have asthma, life, lifelong asthma, so this is gonna be one of my favorite topics, of course. Uh, I've tried the new, uh, primatene mist, it's not as strong as the old, because it had to be reformulated, you know, over the last five and more years that it's been off. But it is available, if someone has asthma, and especially if they're traveling or something, they can dodge in if their canister, you know, has been depleted while they've been on the road, or something like that. So they are available, they're not out front, you have to go to the counter, and you do not have a prescription from your doctor or anyone to get one.
And they're just as effective as...
They are.
Enough to at least get you through, until someone could get there to help you.
Yes, uh, with my prescription inhaler, one puff is good enough for me, that's an Albuterol. With the new, uh, primatene mist, which I used to have a canister in the car, one downstairs, one here, one there, you know, one out in the garage, if I got too much dust in my lungs when I was, uh, you know, out mowing the lawn, or something like that, or, or whatever, uh, the, the new on, on the market is about two puffs to get about the type, same type of relief, but that's the only thing that's out there, that I know of right now, that is non-prescription.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
So, that might have to fall in somewhere.
Sure. We were, we'd, Todd and the nurses had done a little checking with some other districts, and so was it Unity or Toluana that they, okay, I'll let you should talk about that.
Yeah, we, we talk about these things, there is administrators, and try and figure them out, but Toluana found a, a, a provider who was willing to work with them. Um, we're also checking in with our school-based health center, and Promise Healthcare may be able to help us out with that, too.
And, and we would only need one per bill, like, we would just need, you know, a, a doctor to give us a prescription, so we could get ten, one per building, or maybe eleven, so adult ed could have one. Um, and, but I like this idea of looking at that, so we'll have to share that with Tammy, and have her kinda explore that, because that would save us that, you know, having to have the prescriptions, and then we'd have to, every now and then, you know, get another one, because they only, I'm sure, I don't know how, I know that Albuterols expire after a certain amount of time, I don't know about this one, so, okay.
Yeah. The, and most canisters have anywhere from like a hundred and fifty measured ass puffs, like a hundred and fifty up to a hundred and seventy, some are even larger than that, but are you gonna consider that a prescription ju, drug that has to be administered?
Mm-hmm.
Or are we going to, I mean, allow a child to go ahead and carry, uh, primatene mist around with them, because they know they're gonna have to use it when they wanna use it, instead of trying to get to the office where their prescription is?
Well, I think, what, one, this, the spirit of this policy is for students that are, are undesig, you know, they, they don't know that they have asthma, or it's so new that the, you know, parent hasn't had an opportunity to get them a prescription, or what you just said, is, you know, a student might run out, and they're struggling, and they, the, you know, they don't happen to have an inhaler there in the office anymore, because, you know, they haven't brought a new one in. So this would just be a safeguard for all of those situations as they come up.
You're, you're right on, Jennifer, we already have policy and procedure for...
Yep.
Self-administration of certain medications.
Yep.
Asthma medication would be one of them.
Asthma is one of them.
So that would work for kids who forgot to bring their inhaler in?
Possibly, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. So, what we would do with this one is, we would accept the school district supplies, undesignated asthma medication, and we would come up with procedures, um, an administrative procedure for that, and then we would kinda put on hold the designated caregiver administration of the medical cannabis for now, in 7-270, if, if everybody was in agreement with that. Not that we can't come back to it, but I know there's a lot of discussion about cannabis right now everywhere, but I don't know that we, this is one that I wanna be a trendsetter on. Uh, but again, we want to work with families that need, need it, so...
Have you had any one, yet?
Not that I know of, I don't know, have, in the last year or two, have we, okay. Well, since it's been made legal, and people could have the prescriptions, I've not heard of, nobody's brought it to our attention, that we might have some after tonight, people listening and watching, but, so...
I have another question, you're saying about training someone to spot, uh...
The asthma, yes.
When we're doing something like that, uh, I'm starting to think, would it be practical, practical to make sure that two people within the district know how to do that, should somebody be on maternity leave, out, out sick, on vacation, so on and so forth?
Oh, absolutely, and I think it, it's every building. So just even right now, you know, we have, um, at our buildings, we have people who are, you know, have the CPR training, they have the AED training, you know, we make sure that people in the office know how to administer the EpiPens. So this would be something we would just add to their list of training protocols, so, like, you know, the, if, you know, our secretaries relieve each other and take lunch breaks, so, you know, you don't want this, the, the only sec, the only person in the office who knows how to do it, happen to be out at lunch, or who's the only person who's trained. So we would, um, want to train everybody who, you know, if a student walked in, it might not even just be clerical staff, it might be the student engagement advocate has an office, in the office, like a king, that person's office is right there. Um, it could be assistant principals, who have an office right there in the office. So if a student came in and needed help, we want whoever might be there, even the principal. So, it, I, I don't think it would be a difficult training, I think, you know, once we put together something of, these are the signs to look for, and this is what you do, it would be very much like, we do our EpiPen one, really simple and easy.
Very good. I'm, I'm amazed, because growing up, I was the only person I knew that had asthma.
It's pretty, it's a very common name.
It has gone like this crazy, over the last several decades, and, uh, having, knowing what it's like not to be able to breathe.
Sure.
And need relief right away, yeah, I'm...
I think environmental pollutions, and just, you know, the things that are in the air now, and all the chemical inhalants and things, have added to it.
Yep, that's true. Or even a child who's been out, and, uh, you don't know that they have an allergy to, uh, bee stings, mosquito bites.
Oh.
Wasps, and everything. Another reaction could be also, you know...
Not being able to breathe.
The closing of, you know, the windpipe and whatever, is still the same type of thing that happens with, with the asthma.
And Albuterol helps that, too, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
You're right.
So it's, it's just, think about it all, think about it all.
Okay, good question, good comments, Ruth Ann. Any, anybody else, other questions, or things that we really didn't like highlight for you, but that you wanted to discuss? We're willing to kinda entertain whatever you guys want to talk about, related to...
So, actually, going back to the Ashley's law, are we, we're saying that if we get any of these cases, it would be looked at on a case-by-case basis?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I just want people to, when they hear that we're putting it on hold, or that it's, I know right now, that they understand that if we do have...
Absolutely, they just need to come and work with us.
A situation come up, we would be working with that person.
Yeah, we'd work with that family, and that parent, and that student, to get them what they need.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yep, thank you, Tori. Okay, yeah, I just, I don't think that we need to adopt a policy that, you know, once you put something in a policy, it just, I think, I'd much rather be able to, to work with a family individually, to, you know, help come up with a plan. Yep. Okay, so if you have other questions between now and our next meeting, when we adopt these, we're happy to go out and do a little more investigative work, or, um, ask around, and we can call around to some other districts, if there are things that you guys really want us to look into further, before we adopt, um, the whole Press Plus 101 as a whole. So just let us know. Okay? Turn it back over to Ann.
There we go. Okay, well, we don't have any communications, I mean, you did make mention of an email that we received from a student that was addressed about, um, funding for the arts.
And we are, and, and we are working with that student, that her name has come up a cou, I think, did Dr. Berenson Lee, um, doc, okay, so, uh, Dr. Berenson is aware, and we happen to be in a meeting with, um, Sam Smith from Cranert, so I think we are gonna make sure Matilda and Diego get to the Illinois youth, um, what is it called, and...
It's a big deal.
All-state play, yes.
Oh.
It's a really big deal. So, yeah, we're gonna make sure they both get the five hundred dollars that they need to get there. It, it's hu, it's a big accomplishment, so yes. And kudos to the student for emailing everybody, I thought that was pretty brave, and, yeah, so...
It was, and it was, I, I mentioned it to you earlier, because it was a communication to the board, but it was, it was, it dealt, her, her case was specific to that one, um, source of funding, but it was a greater question about, how is funding allocated for the arts, when we do offer fundings of similar nature for sports?
Right.
And so we wanted to look into it district-wide, to see what kind of answer we could come, but that, that, so I'm glad that we got a response back to her, but that would be a good thing that we could mention in future, uh, agendas.
Yep, I'll double-check with Dr. Berenson, because he was gonna reach out to her, and I'll make sure that he did that. And I know Carol and I haven't talked about this yet, in terms of like a district line, but I, there was so much support around, you know, I, only because I didn't need to, because we had people saying, no, we're gonna make sure they get there, um, is, is talking about a, a funding line for things that are not sports-related, is, is what Ann's referring to, the student said, hey, we send, we send students to national, you know, soccer tournaments, and, um, I know I, we have our debate team that does things, and so this student brought up a really valid point, how are we, uh, being equitable in our funding for students who have opportunities to do things on a national level, for theater? So, I don't know that we've had to deal with that before, so, yep.
Okay, uh, item ten point O, administrative reports, I don't believe we have any this evening?
Nope.
Okay. Um, eleven point O, action items, uh, we have the minutes from the August twentieth and September third agendas to approve, uh, but I'm gonna group all this together with the bills and checks. So then, eleven point two, bills and checks, for this month, we have, um, for education fund bills, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, operations and maintenance, two hundred and six thousand dollars, uh, bond and interest funds, zero, transportation fund, uh, eighteen thousand dollars, working cash bonds, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, tort is a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, life safety, uh, fifty-five thousand dollars, payroll, uh, three, three million, I'll round that up to, it was two point nine million, but we rounded it to three million, and Urbana Adult Education, sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we have no inter-fund loans, uh, we do have some personnel items, um, standard personnel items that were listed, um, that we need approval for. And then eleven point five, resolution authorizing and directing the sale or disposal of personal property, um, which, it sounds like we just had some cabinets and shelving and things like that, so, all right. And a, oh, yes, a pole vault pit. I didn't know that was something that could be mu, I have an image of sand, and, anyway, so, um, for all of those action items, I believe we have a vote for that, separate from the others, so...
Move approval to consent agenda.
Okay.
Second, Ed?
Moved in second, Ed, uh, roll call, please.
Member Exum?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Poloski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes, Vice President Hall?
Yes. Okay, uh, motion passes. Uh, twelve point O, we have individual action items, so we have several gifts that we were lucky to receive. Um, twelve point one, let's see, CU Autism Network donated a set of books to Urbana School District to further educate and support current faculty, staff, students, and families on the autism spectrum disorder, and community acceptance and understanding of it. The CU Autism Network has created a program called Autism Aware. We also received a gift from Bonzo's One LLC, uh, who donated a hundred dollars to the Urbana High School Cheerleading Group, um, they donated various items such as gift cards, backpacks, uh, oh, this is a separate group, sorry, I think, uh, gift cards, backpacks, supplies, hygiene products, and blankets, to help unaccompanied minors, uh, throughout our school district. Um, these individuals were Julie Cartel, Jamie and Gary Storm, and my apologies if I mispronounced anybody's name, uh, the Unitarian Universalist Church of Champaign-Urbana, Immigration Justice Task Force, Kristen Walters, and Sarah Hoag and the Stone Creek Church. Uh, the following donated a total of five, five thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars to the Urbana High School Marching Band, William Catherine Falstich, Stan Abreen, Stephanie and Thomas Nevens, Albert Veloki and Anne Heinz Silves, Beverly Sherman, Edith Harlow, Colonel W.C. Coke Jr., from, retired from the U.S. Air Force, Michael Christine Atkinson, David Forsyth, Ed Chevalier and Mary Kennedy, Deborah Plankenhorn, Robert and Diane Ellis, Bernard and Judith Rosenstein, Sandra Smith Volk, Steve and Donna Durak, Karen Mortensen, Scott Paluska and Nancy McElwin, Ann Sickles and Alexander Withers, and Teresa and Robert Sickles, and John and Linda Minor. The following group donated a total of seven hundred and thirty dollars to the Ron Garretts, did I say that right, Memorial Fund, Becky McCabe, Judith O'Connor, Service Wire Company, Kim Smith and David Scadden, Rosemary Loughlin, Belinda Porter and Gregory Wahlberg, Gary and Judy Ring, James and Gloria Profetti, Jean and Ellen Amberg, Richard Bodine, Staz and Katherine Gorski, Lori Johnson, and Clark and Beth Anderson. From Four Wheels LLC, or Scotty's Brew House, and Country Squire Cleaners, we received a donation in a total of two hundred and twenty-five dollars towards the Pieto Book Bag fundraiser, to support the Martin Luther King Elementary students. The Ruth Kugler Trust, um, from Paul Anderson, donated for the beautification of Urbana Middle School, and we received fabric decor, fabric decorations, floral sprays, sewing supplies, beads, hot glue, paints, and miscellaneous craft supplies valued at six hundred dollars, it's a lot of sparkles. Uh, Dana Raben donated a Yamaha Alto Sachs, and a soft Alto Sachs case, valued at one thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars to the Evelyn Burnett Underwood Music Assistance Program at Urbana Middle School. So approval is asked to accept these gifts and write thank yous for them. Can we have a, do we need a roll call for that? No, we need a motion first?
So moved acceptance, yeah.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Um, okay.
For you, Peggy.
Yes, all right. Just voice vote, okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
No opposed, motion carries. Uh, twelve point two, we have to approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, ran a school district adult education budget. Does anybody have any last questions about that, before we all seek the one?
I move acceptance of that.
Okay?
Second.
Moved in second, Ed. Uh, roll call, please, do we have to roll call that one for the budget?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do. Did you, you were making a face, did you wanna offer any other opinions about this?
I probably need to point out a couple changes.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, before we finish the...
At your paper.
Sorry about that.
At Your Place is a colorful, updated document from the one I provided at the last meeting, I went into more detail at the last meeting, but just wanted to kinda update some changes, uh, 'cause this has expanded, as you can see, from the last meeting, I've added some more information.
Okay.
What we did, what we, what, the one thing that did change was, unfortunately, to the negative, there was about two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars of money in the Title I grant, we were working with the wrong total, we thought we had the, we thought we didn't have the carryover in the number, the carryover wasn't the number the state was reporting, so we had to move two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars out, um, that moved, and unfortunately, move those expenses over to the ed fund budget. So the ed fund budget has, surplus has gone down by that amount. Uh, the other change to this is just adding the carryover balance, now that the audit was more completed, I was able to get, um, the fund balance figures, at least estimated more clearly, so I've added that column. And you can see, um, because of the taxes not coming in, like we expected at the end of June, we have a lot of negatives, especially in the ed fund, um, because those funds where we levy taxes, we didn't get about eight point four million dollars. So that's why the negatives are there, I wanted to make sure I pointed that out, but you can also see that the current year surplus is higher for FY twenty, because those taxes we didn't get last year, got rolled into this year's budget, and made the surplus look overly healthy, better than normal. So what I've done is I've, um, taken out the taxes that were received late, so you can kinda get to what the more, that yellow column, is more of the normal, had we not had this... Had we not had this thing happen to us this year, our normal surplus or deficit would be in that yellow column. And then the ending fund balance, at the end of all of this, the ending fund balance projected for next year, we should be back to normal. So over these two years, even though last year made it look worse, this year's looking a little better. Over the two years, it's going to be fine. And the other thing that I talked about a little bit at the last meeting was the OSF taxes. I did check with the County Treasurer. OSF has not paid their taxes currently. So even though the tax bills were sent out to OSF, they've been extended, are part of our extensions that we get, more than likely, we're not going to get this money. So I wanted to make sure, to point out that that is a revenues that are included in this budget, that if they end up not paying, which is likely, it's going to even be worse by, so that's a total of $800,000 in OSF taxes that we won't receive. So, for instance, for the education fund, instead of having a $358,000 surplus, we'd more likely have a $212,000 deficit. And as I've stated in the past, though, $212,000 here or there is really what I consider mostly balanced because 1% off on when these things, when these tax revenues come in is going to swing $300,000 to $400,000 in a year, so. Depending on when we receive our taxes, it could really swing either way, so. Overall, I think it, it looks good, but I just wanted to point out those couple changes, so you could be aware of that before you approve tonight.
Thank you. Sorry, I rushed through that without thinking. So are there any questions, though, before we do finish the motion? No? Okay, so we had a move in seconding, so do we have a vote for this, then? Yeah, vo- roll call, please.
Member Exum?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Pulaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes, and President, Vice President Hall?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, I don't believe we have any call for futures. Do we have call for future special or executive meetings?
Not at this time.
Not at this time, okay. 14.0, the superintendent's report.
Okay, so we're going, so our screen is up. Something new that I'd like to, and actually Lori, if you want to go back to the picture we had up there before. So you can see, we've kind of got a little setup. If, I don't know if our board members noticed, and I know our live TV can't, people can't see it, but behind the TV, we're, we're trying to be accommodating for our audience when we have presentations. We're going to have a couple of study sessions here coming up, and we've been working with our technology team. So one thing that we're, and Randy has been kind of instrumental in that, is we're going to be providing a couple bigger screens where, and right now, thank you, audience, but we don't have a full house, but when we do have a full house, it's really hard for people to see the presentations, and of course, you know, it's most, it's very important that you guys can see, but I think sometimes it's even hard for you to see because of how our, how our, how our display is set up. So we're going to have a screen that will, you know, kind of be fixed to the, what do you call this, floating ceiling kind of thing that we'll pull down, and then over there, we have a little screen right now that adult ed uses, and we're going to get a larger one that adult ed can use. And so we'll be able to display, we'll have kind of a splitter working where we'll have, whatever is showing here will also show over there. So when we have a large audience, you know, people will actually be able to see the presentations and see the numbers and, and see the grades and see all the, you know, wonderful things that our administrators and, and community people will come and share with you, but we want them to be able to see the presentations too. So that will be forthcoming. We tried to have it ready for tonight, for our new little model of the superintendent report, but that'll be something that we'll be moving toward, hopefully very soon, so as soon as we get those screens in. So moving forward, I, I want to kind of again put a lot of our students and our teachers, Cameron's been doing a great job, and people have been sending us stories, so we want, when I report those, instead of the camera always being on me, we now will put the camera on where it should be so we can highlight the people who I'm going to be talking about. So while we've been here tonight, the reason, I know we've already acknowledged our wonderful teachers at the high school, I got a text from them. So this is from Laura, Mark, Taryn, and Dave. They know they were on tonight's agenda, so they're apologizing for not being here. Because of our babies, kids, dogs, day jobs, and commutes, we're unable to be there tonight. But again, this was for the UHS Habitat Club, like Ann said earlier. However, we appreciate the acknowledgement of our efforts, which have been largely inspired by the awesomeness of our students. In lieu of our attendance this evening, please let everyone on the board know that we extend an invitation to drop by either of our two upcoming local habitat, habitat builds. This Thursday, they will have 19 students at 507 East Columbia in Champaign between 8:00 and 3:00. They will be working again on Saturday at a, to determine, at a TBD location, but any interested board member can email us for their address. We'd be happy to have any of them come by and check out what we do. Thanks for all you do, Laura, Mark, Taryn, and Dave. So, there they are, our lovely high school folks. So our next item we want to highlight is, I sent this email to just a few people. Our parent advisory, our district parent teacher advisory committee was supposed to be starting up tomorrow, but I don't have enough people to meet, so I'm going to cancel the first meeting. I think I was a little over ambitious and thought I would just have, you know, all these people like, you know, jumping up and down to be on this committee. And I, I do have a couple, but not enough where I felt like we had a, a, a large enough group to be able to start making any decisions. So Tori and Brenda are my board members. I've sent an email out. I am still waiting to get, because this is, I know teacher's not up there, but this is a teacher advisory group too, so I, I still need a couple UEA teachers. I, I got to get those from Brian Lake. We did have some parents who I was kind of recruiting to be on this committee, but we have several other working committees going on, so people, you know, are kind of picking and choosing. I know Scott's out there. He wants to, to do some PTA council things. We had another person who was going to be part of this group, who now wants to be part of the marketing and communications group with Cameron. So, you know, I, I, we want our parents to, to be in the spaces where they feel like they can be utilized the most. So right now, I need to get a more representative group. I only have like two or three people. And I definitely want elementary, middle, early childhood, high school represented, and as many buildings. So my goal is, we already had October 22nd and December 3rd set, so we were going to meet three times this semester. So now our first meeting will be October 22nd, and that gives me a little more time to now go out and try to, I'm going to remind our administrators tomorrow, principals' meetings. If you have had parents come to you and say they're interested, please send me their names. We had a great family forum event last Monday at Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center where we had a lot of interested parents, so I'm going to reach out to a couple of those people who, who have, again, they're volunteering to be on other committees, but, you know, see if they would be interested in, in being a part of this group too. So I just wanted to put that out for the viewing public. If you're interested in being part of the district parent teacher advisory committee, please let me know. Our first meeting will now be October 22nd. Okay. All right, Lori, we can go to the next one. All right, so I, I hope most of you saw this story, another, highlighting another one of our high school students, Olivia Rosenstein, was highlighted, I think this was just last week, the national, oh yes, it became, it was public on Wednesday. National Merit Scholarship Corporation named her a student semifinalist for the National Merit Scholarship Program. So she's one out of 1.6 million students, and that's a great achievement. So if you've not had a chance to read that story, please go on. There's a picture of her wearing her medal. She'll take the SAT again, and depending on how she, how, what her score is like this next time she takes it, she might not be a semifinalist, she might be a finalist. So if, in the event that happens, we'll have her come back and again recognize her in person, but there she is, so kudos to Olivia. And this is from our band. So this weekend, our band, and I, oh, I forgot my note. I thought they got first place in, Cameron didn't put it on there. I've got to look for it. Does anybody know first in percussion, and we've got band parents out there, and wins, and second place overall. So here's a couple of those pictures. So you can see their, their trophies and some of their line formations. So congratulations again to the Tiger Marching Band. This was in Monticello. So we're excited for them. They're going to have a great season. So next is Cross Country. So shout out to our band at Cross Country, who started the year off strong. We, a great story for them. This is just one of the pictures they, the coach, Coach Faroki sent us some great pictures. The UHS girls teams finished second in their invite, and the boys finished first. So this was a first invite victory for the boys in over a decade. So you can see from the picture, they're super excited. Olivia Rosenstein took home the individual victory on the girl's side, beating the best, next best runner by 45 seconds. Celia Barberi, Ashley Gilbert, and Sophie all blew their previous performances out of the water. Sam Lambert led the boys to the team win, and Park Mitchell had the best improvement over last year, dropping over a minute off his time to finish 10th behind Senior Jeremy Bukata. So they're super excited. So congrats to their band at Cross Country team. And then Splash is off and starting at the middle school and the high school. This has been, I've had a lot of families asking me about it. I was going to bring my booklet in here, so here's the orange booklet for the middle school. We put the session times and dates. Cameron is going to have these online, too. We're, we're trying to make sure that, we've, we've heard from families that they want to have an oppo- Right now, the students have to go pick these up in the office, or they have to go to the counselor's office at the high school or the main office at the middle school. But a lot of families have said, hey, if you just put it online, we can print the form out. Because relying on my seventh grader to go pick it up is sometimes not happening. I remember that from my own experience. So Splash has started, and then the next one is, uh, I was going to do the, did he do the high schools tutoring one? No, he did not. So I have a visual for that. So also happening at the high school is tutoring has started. I've had a lot of families at the UHS open house and at, just other, at the family forum, wanting to know how they can get some additional help for their high school students. So tutoring has started at the high school after school on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So I have a paper for that buried in all these papers somewhere. Oh, here it is. Free after-school tutoring before and after school, and the high school is going to have a Spanish-speaking tutor available at all sessions. So we've had a lot of families asking about math and Spanish. So that'll be available before school Mondays, 7:25 to 7:55, and Wednesdays, 7:25 to 55 in the cafeteria. After-school tutoring at the high school Tuesdays, 3:30 to 4:30 in the library, and Thursdays, 3:30 to 4:30 in the library. So Monday, Wednesday before school, Tuesday, Thursday after. So parents, if your kids aren't telling you about it, it's happening, and we can get you the information if you need it, so. It'll be on the web, that'll be on the website, too. And this last one, oh, we've got two more, actually. This last one is, big thank you to Ms. Abbott's first grade class at King. They sent some thank yous to the Ed Scott Fire Protection District, and the firefighters there were really excited and took some photos. So that's that. And tomorrow, last one, you don't have a big visual for this, but, so Battle for the Paddle. Have you guys heard about this? So this is, tomorrow, Dr. Zola and I are battling for the paddle. We're playing ping pong. I don't have my own paddle. I hope if she's watching, she doesn't have hers, but anyway. So this is a fundraising for United Way, and this will be happening at Hickory Point Bank in downtown Champaign. Dr. Zola and I are set to battle for the paddle at 8:30, and it's all for fundraising for United Way, so anyone who pledges, you could, I think you can still pledge. So if you pledge for me, you know, if those pledges will go whoever wins. So you have to kind of pledge, like who's going to win, so if I'm going to beat her, if she's going to beat me, but all the proceeds go to United Way. We'll be in costume, too, so I'm sure there'll be pictures, yes. I'm not going to give it away yet. So that's it. Battle for the paddle tomorrow. I'll have to let you know if I win or not, or Susan might cream me. I don't know, we'll see. That's it for me.
We do have some FOIA requests. We have three. First is from Dr. Donald Owen with Lead for Equity and Engagement LLC, requesting student expulsion information for the years 2008 through 2019, including the number of students recommended, disaggregated by school year, grade level, gender, race, IEP status, and free and reduced lunch status, the reason for expulsion, determination of the board in each case, and the length of each expulsion. Student drug offense information from 2008 to 2019, including the number of student offenses that involve, quote, possessing, distributing, purchasing, selling, or offering for sale any illegal drug or controlled substance, end quote, disaggregated by school year, grade level, gender, race, IEP status, and free and reduced lunch status, consequences, including length, suspension, or expulsion or other. From Jonathan Massey from New York University, we have a FOIA to approve and, approve and rejected charter, I've assumed that means approved and rejected charter school applications. The charter school authorizer name, authorizer's decision, the date of the decision for the period of June 2013 to February 2017. And one from Keith F. Galloway of DRG Holdings LLC, requesting a copy of the transportation contract or contracts with the current transportation vendor. And I don't know if those have already been taken care of? They have all been taken care of, okay. Next, board reports. Do we have any board reports?
Well, I just wanted to mention, since our last board meeting, I attended the Program Council, which is a, a meeting of instructional leaders, department chairs, and grade level leaders district-wide. Yvonda Smith is facilitating that body this year. And the focus in the Program Council this year is on data assessment, what types of data are being collected, how they're being used and reported. And I was impressed in the small groups that were reporting on their uses of data, you know, it's clear that there's various approaches to data collection and analysis, and just a real stated commitment to using data to inform best practices and, and really drive change just to apply it, so. It's a good group, and I'm glad it's, it's back and moving well.
Good.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming, Kay.
Other board reports?
Well, yes. We do, Ann. Ann and I had lunch at the high school today. Had a very pleasant experience, my first time act, well, since going through the old line when I was a student, of course. The food all looked delicious. We've heard that everyone is loving the food. I liked what I selected today, which was the ham wrap. And it was also packaged, you could, you could do a lot of different things at all the stations and whatever. I picked up something that was pre-packed, and it also had the macaroni salad and very nicely finely chopped pieces of pineapple with it. So I was very pleased with my meal, my meal. And I want to thank Ann for suggesting it. She emailed me yesterday and says, hey, you want to go to lunch sometime this week? I was like, yeah, yeah, let's do it. My, my schedule is free. So thank you, Ann.
I'm glad we went. I, I always like to go because I, I want to trust my kids when they tell me that something is good or bad, but they say the same about my own food, so I want to test it out. I, I found that, that like the setup was the same as last year when we had Aramark and that, you know, we had the main entree selection, and then you could walk to the station where the Subway-style sandwiches were, and then there was the pizza and everything. So I haven't, I don't know if the menu items have changed significantly since we had Aramark, but it was, it was chicken quesadillas today, and they were nice enough to let me pick toppings from the sandwich station to put on my quesadilla, and I don't know if it's just because I was grown up, food gone, or what, but it was, yeah, it was nice, and the process was smooth, and, and it also was really quiet. I have to say, too, not just about the food, but because of the new system that we've got where we've got the upperclassmen having sixth period, the ones who are allowed to go off campus to eat, it just, I mean, I don't think it was ever, the noise level has ever been crazy at the high school, but it was so much quieter than what I thought it was going to be, and there was just, there were still empty tables in places where kids could go, and nobody was packed in like sardines, so it was a very smooth transition. Even when the transition period happened, I thought it was really nice, nicely done. If we're on board reports, I just wanted to remind, there was an email that we got about the, the open house coming up. I think it's before our next meeting. It's, I think, October 3rd next week with the CU Schools Foundation Fowler Farm Open House. I went to it last year, and, or maybe it was two years ago, and it was really fun. I mean, it's way, way, way the heck out west, and I could not tell you how to get there, but it's on Google Maps. But it was fun because we got to see all the kids with all the hands-on work they'd done with the chicken coop they'd built, and all of the, the flowers and the vegetables and things they were growing, and the way. and things they were growing, and the way they'd been working on the land just to clear the land out and build structures. It was really exciting. And they had a food truck available, which I think is gonna be there again, sponsored by Hendrick House. So if anybody wants to know, it was middle schoolers, and I think we had some high schoolers there, and I don't know if they're expanding it to include more kids, because it's both Unit 4 and 116. It'd be great, and they would love to see anybody out there from Urbana who wants to go and give support to it. So if the weather's good, it's from 5 till 7 next week.
And I'm gonna, Kim's gonna go, it's the second.
Oh, it's the second, I'm sorry. Sorry, thank you.
Yep. Kim's gonna go, and Angie's gonna be representing us at another meeting, and I'm gonna be at Luda, so I'm not gonna be able to go, but Kim's gonna be. So thank you for remembering that. They're also going to be dedicating the pavilion that they've been building and working on all summer, so this will be kind of the big, like, opening night for the new pavilion out there. So I'm glad you remembered to say that. Thank you.
If it's anything like the weather tonight, or last year, it was so nice, and it was just, just nice to get outside of the country in fresh air.
And just another thing, you want any vision meeting on October 3rd?
That's the, that's why I got my dates mixed up. That's a Thursday, right? Okay. And the second is a Wednesday. Okay. Yes, it's in Mattoon. Three of us are going.
Oh. We've got at least three of them.
Yeah. Okay. I don't think we have any other board reports, so I think adjournment would be in order. Do we have a movement?
Oh, hold.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.